All right, Chair Stewart, I have my devices rolling and the floor is yours.
Thanks, Anthony. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Planning Commission. It is Tuesday, July 20th, excuse me, 2021, 6 o'clock. We have a full quorum of people, and we are called to order. We will start the meeting with a moment of silence. All right, thanks, everyone. Do we have any Planning Commissioner announcements? Jen, your hand is up.
Yes, thank you, Susan. I have actually two events that I would like to announce really quickly. On September 11th, which, you know, is a very important day, Morro Bay is actually going to be celebrating their 150th founding birthday, and Morro Bay Beautiful and the City of Morro Bay are coming together to put on this birthday party. And it's going to be from 2 to 4 o'clock, again, it's on September 11th, and it takes place at the Morro Bay Community Center, and it will be $1 per person for admission. And while you're there, they're going to be commemorating this amazing anniversary with a puzzle that is going to be released. They're going to show you the original artwork there, it will be unveiled, and the puzzle will be for sale. So that's really cool and exciting, and so that would be great to attend. And then also, the Morro Bay Maritime Museum, they are going to be showing a viewing of their movie, Once the Abalone Capital of the World: Never Seen Before Film Footage. It will be at the Bay Theater on Sunday, August 22nd, at 7:00 PM. Doors open at 6:30. And tickets are available at the museum, and their hours are Thursday through Monday, 10 to 2 o'clock. So that's pretty much it. Thank you.
Great, thanks a lot for that, Jen. Anybody else have any announcements? Don't see anybody. All right, moving on to the public comment period, this is a time to comment on items that are not on the agenda, or if you can't stay for later in the meeting, anything you would like to address that is on the agenda. Anthony, do we have anybody in the queue?
Thank you, Chair. Yes, I do see a raised hand by Sean Green. I'm going to go ahead and allow talk. Okay, Sean, you are unmuted.
Thank you. One really quick public comment. On page one of the Planning Commission agenda, it says that all agenda correspondence will be published about an hour before the meeting. I know that's one of my favorite parts of every two weeks. I know I'm a nerd here, but I love when that gets published. And I know that there are people subscribed to that list, so it allows community members to think about any public comments that are posted and then possibly react accordingly. So thank you very much, and have a great meeting.
Thanks, Sean. Good to hear from you. All right, and we have no presentations. So moving along to the consent calendar, we have one item on there. It's our current and advanced planning processing list. Do we have any discussion on that? Any comments? Seeing none. Do we have a motion to approve the consent calendar? Joe?
I'll move there, we approve the consent.
And a second? I see Bill. Okay. Let's call the vote here.
Um. Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Ford?
Yes.
Commissioner Graffia?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Roshan?
Yes.
Chairperson Stewart?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0. Thank you.
All right. Moving on to our public hearings, we have item B1. Hopefully, you all got the message that that was actually polled. Cindy may want to do a quick report on that, and then we will open it for public comment since it's a public hearing, and see if anybody wanted to comment on it anyhow. So Cindy, you can take it away. And you're muted still.
Sorry about that. Good evening, members of the Planning Commission. Yes, just late yesterday, staff did receive a request for continuance of this public hearing item. The applicant is requesting that the matter be considered, excuse me, continue to a date uncertain. They would like to work on some further design issues that they just became aware of, and so they are requesting that. And that would be brought forward back to you. As a continuance to a date uncertain, what that means is that we would renotice it to our full noticing list, because this was also noticed for tonight's hearing. What staff is recommending is that the Planning Commission open the public hearing for any members of the public who may have signed on tonight and wish to provide public comments. And that's the balance of my comments, but of course, I'm happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Thanks, Cindy. Any commissioners have any questions? Okay, so we will open this for public comment. Anthony, do we have anybody waiting to speak on this?
Thank you, Chair Stewart. I do not see any raised hands in the queue.
I see Sean Green just raised his hand. I know we did get some correspondence from him.
Right after I looked away from the screen.
There you go.
Sean, you are unmuted.
Thank you so much. I wasn't aware that that item got polled, which is related to what my earlier public comment was. So thank you very much for letting the public know that that item has been polled, and I wish the applicant the best in her ongoing review.
All right, thanks, Sean, and thanks for your detailed email earlier. Appreciate that. So moving on to new business, the City Council Goals and Objectives Update and receipt of Planning Commission.
Chair Stewart, we would need a motion by the Commission to continue the item.
All right, so do we have a motion to continue the item?
Motion to continue.
And Bill, and a second?
Second.
Okay, perfect. Call the question there.
Okay, Commissioner Roshan?
Yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes.
Commissioner Graffia?
Yes.
Commissioner Ford?
Yes.
Chairperson Stewart?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you very much.
Yeah, have a good night, Cindy.
Thanks, you too.
All right, moving on to new business. And Scott, did you want to present us?
So we do have our esteemed City Manager on the meeting this evening, and he's going to introduce it, Scott Collins. There he is.
Great.
Turned his camera on, so I'll turn it over to Scott, and then I'll have some things to say a little bit later on when we go into the items for discussion. And I have a little bit of a brief PowerPoint for you that has a couple of slides on it to go over that piece of it to assist in your deliberations.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Chairperson Stewart and commissioners in the community watching tonight, later on. Just wanted to give an overview of our goals process, and Scott made some look for input from the Planning Commission as we begin the goal-setting process for City Council. Just by way of background, the city created a strategic framework policy almost back in around 2015, 2016 timeframe, at which point we had created 10 overarching city goals, about 87 objectives slash action items. For a city of our size, it was quite ambitious, and, you know, definitely a good first shot. And, you know, since that time, we've narrowed those down to four key goals with about 20 to 30 action items that help us move towards those goals. The point of that is really sort of hone in our resources from a budgetary standpoint, staff standpoint, to try to move big initiatives forward. And the goal is to do that every couple of years, following the election cycle, you know, a few city councils seated, but, you know, they sort of carry forward the vision of the community, understanding the needs and desires of the community, to make sure the work that we're doing as a city actually benefits those who, you know, pay the taxes, pay the fees, and all the things that relate back to the services and the infrastructure that we provide. Typically, the way we engage the community in this is through online survey, through emails to City Council, through this, what we're doing tonight, engaging with the various boards and commissions of the city, and then hosting a series of forums where folks can provide input, and ultimately culminating with the City Council, having to grapple with all that information to narrow down the focus to a few select items, because we do have limited resources. We want to make sure we're working towards the most important goals as a city. Fast forward to 2019, we revisited as a city the goals and came forward with economic and fiscal sustainability as the top priority goal. At that time, the city was facing pretty significant financial challenges and became more acute during the pandemic. The second goal is improving infrastructure in our public spaces. The third goal, which is very pertinent to this commission, is to complete the updates of the city's land use plans and address affordable housing issues. The fourth goal, which is really sort of a good governance goal, if you will, is to improve communication and engagement with the community. And then City Council, at the beginning of this year, added a temporary goal related to the COVID-19 pandemic, both from a public health response and economic impact response. So those, each of those four major goals plus the temporary goal have action items that are specific initiatives, programs, policies, et cetera, that the city can take up to help move the metrics, if you will, on those major goal areas. I submitted, I believe Scott submitted, and part of that is staff submitted attachment that has the template that shows sort of those action items and spells out, you know, where we are in regard to those, in terms of making progress. And as we move into, you know, this year, the goal was to start the review process once more in January following the election. At that time, our city was still pretty mired in the pandemic response, and so council delayed taking this up again until mid-year, and here we find ourselves. So I will go through an update on all of the 26 action items. It's spelled out in the attachment as well as the staff report. But needless to say, the focus for the last couple of years has been primarily on our fiscal position, because if we can't afford to provide the services, you know, it makes it really challenging, when we know how much our community depends upon those services. So a lot of focus has been in that area, but beyond that, we have been working on other key initiatives, and we thank you all and your predecessors for your work on the general plan and the continued work on the zoning code. That's been a major lift for the organization. And I really thank the community members who stepped up over the years to provide input into that process. So that obviously is still continuing on with this commission and also the work on the housing element and our connectivity to the region on affordable housing issues. Still is a major concern and a major effort on the part of the city. So again, we've had, we've made strides in some of the action items. Others were still in progress, and some, we still have a lot of work to do. So council hasn't lost sight of that. Certainly, we like to finish things when we start, but as we all know, the times evolve. As the pandemic has shown, you don't get to choose when those things happen, and we have to adjust as a city and a community. And so we're well aware of the fact that new needs may have emerged over the last couple of years, which is why we're speaking to the commissions, the boards, and asking for input from our community through surveying. So where we stand today is, you know, we're talking to all the commissions and the boards. We'll be putting a survey out online probably next week or so, and then we will have a community forum probably at the end of August with City Council, where we'll provide all the input we've received in sort of aggregate form. And then later in September, they will have a forum where they sort of grapple with all that information and either continue forward with the goals we have, or revise, or start afresh. It really is their prerogative, but the input that you all provide is very important. With regard to the Planning Commission, I did mention, you know, obviously the very heavy lifting you've all done with the general plan, but some of the other items that will likely come forward, so long as these action items are still relevant, is looking at our parking management and our business corridors, particularly in the waterfront area. We have concluded a parking study, initial parking study, that will be providing information to the Harbor Advisory Board, Planning Commission, and the Public Works Advisory Board a bit later this summer or early fall, and then over to City Council. And obviously, there's a lot of touch points with projects and other things that you all look at, so it's important that we get your input. There's some potential for redevelopment of the Market Street Plaza area and Centennial Plaza that's, you know, adjacent to that. And if a project proceeds forward, you would be reviewing that. Scott and his team, and I believe there's an ad hoc committee of this commission as well, that's looking at how we can improve our planning process. We appreciate that work. Zoning code I mentioned, and of course, you know, the housing issues have not gone away. If anything, they've only become more acute during the pandemic, and so there's a lot of work to do to help address that. So those are the five major action items that are current and existing that have relevance to this committee. I guess at this point, I'll probably turn it over to Scott to help lead the discussion that I'd be happy to. You know, Scott, if you think it's relevant to, I can entertain questions sort of about the process before we get into the specific items you're asking for input on them, or we can just hold until the end.
I mean, maybe it's a good idea right now. I mean, could you just finish discussing process, that maybe if they have questions about that, because most of them would not have been involved in the past with it, so they might. If they don't, then I'll just hop into the discussion about potential items for consideration or recommendation to council.
And do we have any questions from the commission?
All right.
All right, I think we can move on then.
Okay, Scott, take it away. All right. I'm going to share my screen here.
Okay. See if I can actually switch the slide. It doesn't seem to want to change the slide. All right, here we go. All right, so in the staff report, I provided you a list of 10 items for consideration by the Planning Commission for recommendation to the City Council. One of the items is one that we're already working on. It's related to housing element implementation. The city's housing element was adopted by the City Council back in August of last year, so about a year ago. And there are several items that we received grant funding, about $160,000 worth of grant funding to go do implementation on, and I'll talk a little bit more about that in a minute when we get into the list. And then there are nine other items there that are from the recently adopted general plan, local program that was adopted by the City Council in May. We're again looking for you to review the list, and potentially, there's other items that aren't on the list. I really put the list together just as a starting point for you to have consideration and a conversation about. It's not the end-all, be-all. I know that council is interested in us, you know, moving forward with implementation of the general plan, local program, given that we did just recently adopt it. But certainly, there are other things that we could be willing to consider as well for recommendation to council. We'd like you to riddle the list down. It'd be great if you kind of focused on a couple of items that we forward to council, because we do have ongoing initiatives that we're working on, including the planning process improvement that the City Manager mentioned, as well as the housing element implementation that's actually on the list. So having a little focus between, you know, under five would be great if we could riddle it down to that. And then, let's see, I think I have the list on the, sorry, on the next page. And so you'll see, these are the first six items on the list. At the top of the list, there's headings, and you have a description of the item, like potential funding source, like where would money come to do these things? Where would it come from? Who would be responsible for it? Would it be staff doing the work? Would it be staff in concert with the Planning Commission doing the work? Or would we have to hire consultants? You know, and then priority. Here's where hoping you'll, you know, prioritize these so we can at least, you know, identify the top five, top three, top four, that you're interested in conveying to City Council for us to have in our work program moving forward for the next goal-setting process. And then there's notes in here. Not all the items have notes, but some of the ones where we're doing work on them now are in process. I've added some notes to those, so you can see what we're doing with regard to those. I'll just start off and hit the, you know, the items, you know, one by one here. The Planning Commission, over time, has talked about updating the residential design guidelines. That is an implementation action in the general plan. It might be good to do it by character area, since we have the city broken down in the general plan by character area, so something for consideration for the council. We've long discussed development of commercial design guidelines. You know, these first two design guideline items could be partially handled by staff with a little bit of general fund money thrown into, to help out with some potential, like artwork or something like that, so we could put together a good package, you know, and a good document, so we could show, have good pictures of the things that we want our neighborhoods' commercial areas to look like. Our waterfront master plan is well outdated. There's the potential that we could, you know, pursue grant funding for this item. It'd be another big plan lift, you know, for the department and Planning Commission, a lot of public meetings, a lot of stakeholder interviews, that type of thing. That would be done by consultants. And maybe the beginning phase of this is just going out there pursuing grant funds, and maybe that could be the beginning phase of that. The housing element implementation that I spoke about before, that's, you know, we again have about $160,000. We're working on residential by right policies that would allow us to approve administratively multifamily housing projects. Along with that, go to objective design standards, meaning we have objective design standards. If the project, you know, of 10 multifamily units meets those objective design standards, then we would roll it through an administrative approval process, meaning it wouldn't go to Planning Commission, so it would be a much faster process. We're going to update the city's inclusionary housing policies. ADU and density bonus policies are kind of outdated and need to be updated. And then we're also working in concert with the City of Aurora Grande, Grover Beach, Tascadero on development of stock and accessory dwelling unit plans. We're going to have floor plans, I think, that are going to be reverse plans and regular plans, and then there are going to be, I think, three exterior finished materials for each one, so they can be matched to the architecture or the finished materials of the main residence. Looking at opportunities, we've heard of this before, about infrastructure financing districts where we could put in public improvements by doing that. Maybe that's curbs, gutters, sidewalks, maybe that's bike facilities, things along of that nature, or potentially, we could look at, you know, formation in our business areas, our business improvement districts. That would be us working with the, our commercial folks in town to see if they have interest in doing that, because they're the ones that have to decide they want to go down that road. And then potentially, we could look at development of incentive programs, such as reduced development impact fees, to see if we couldn't entice businesses to come in that have the paid living wage. A lot of cities are developing policies like that on the economic development side of things, and that might be something the city, you know, could do as well. And that could be something that's simply done with the Planning Commission and staff, so not expensive. The next four items is our bike and pedestrian master plan's kind of funky and kind of outdated. Might be nice to update that. There's the potential that we could, you know, pursue grants to make that happen, because we wouldn't be able to do it in-house, it would have to be done by consultants. And one of the, you know, grant opportunities might be some of the Complete Streets grants that are out there, and that might be the kind of step one of that one is see if we could identify some grants that we could get some money for to start that process. Develop historic preservation ordinance. That's again, an implementation item that comes out of the general plan. And the cool part about this is the Morro Bay Historical Society has provided the city a draft ordinance, so we're at the start from scratch. We could, you know, work with the Planning Commission, maybe form a subcommittee, and we could kind of go through it from that standpoint to start with, and then bring it back to the full commission. But again, they've done the heavy lifting to get at least a framework for that, so we could do that, and it might be, given that they've done all the sort of lead work there, it might be something that could be done fairly quickly. Our climate action plan is out of date and needs to be updated. We are working with the other communities in the county. All of them have outdated plans, with the exception of the City of San Luis. They have a department that does climate action planning, and they're internally updating their own cap. We're hoping to work with the other jurisdictions to update the climate action plan and pursue maybe grant funding, you know, along those lines with the other jurisdictions in the county, so that we could, you know, pull our resources to make, get more bang for our buck there. So that might be a good one, especially given, you know, climate change issues that we're facing now. And then one that we've talked about several times related to cutting down trees is it'd be nice to have a tree bank program. You know, that's something staff could absolutely do. We could, you know, staff and Planning Commission get together, we could come up with a program to, you know, establish a tree bank in the city. Maybe it's at Delmar Park, maybe it's someplace else. But that's something that's come up in regard to numerous projects, as well as appeals related to, you know, trees being taken down and that type of thing. So that's kind of the 10 items. And I do, we do have a couple of questions that Scott has in the staff report as well. There's two of them, you know, and one, do the current city goals that were talked about in the report address the needs and priorities of the community, particularly in relation to community developments? And if not, are there other goals that you would want to consider? Hence the list that I gave you. And then do the current action items related to community development that we're working on, anything like the zoning code update that we're getting ready to bring back to you now, are those good priorities, or do we need to consider other ones? And again, that's why I gave you the list, is to maybe help with a couple of other ones we could propose to City Council, get some concurrence on the part of the, part of the commission. I'm going to, that ends my presentation, and I want to stop sharing my screen so it can have a discussion. At any point you want me to put the list back up on the screen, I'm happy to do that.
Great, thanks, Scott. All right, who wants to start this off? And Scott, at what point do we open for public comment?
You can certainly open for public comment right now, if you'd like. If you want to have some discussion about it first, you can do that. Timing's kind of up to you. You could open it up at both. We don't have anybody in the queue, so.
Okay.
So maybe we want to wait, I don't know.
You know, maybe we start with our discussion, and if we hit a lag, we'll see if anybody out in the public has decided they want to chime in.
And then I want to apologize to Councilmember Heller. He's not nobody. He's just not generally. He's the one in the queue. There's one.
Oh, okay. Would Councilmember Heller like to contribute anything at this point? Anthony, does, does he have his hand up? I don't actually see him here.
He does not. He's just here. I.
He's just here. All right, we're just calling him out. Okay. All right, so who wants to start us off here? Any thoughts?
I will suggest one thing. And I did, actually, I had a really nice conversation about all this with Kathy Novak yesterday morning, when we were talking about the other project, and then I did meet with Scott Collins this morning, and he talked about all kinds of things. One of the things I suggested to him in terms of this question about the current city goals, and number four was to improve communication and engagement with the community. I personally feel like this city does an outstanding job of making information available and channels of communication open. So I feel like, not that that's ever just done, but to say perhaps continue communicating with, you know, making all those avenues, those outreach things, those, you know, ways to receive agendas and so on available. Maybe there's more that could be done, but I really think the city does a pretty amazing job of it. What I personally would like to see is more communication between boards and commissions and committees and council. You know, there seem to be crossover issues where something will come up in Planning Commission, and oh gee, that's a PWEB thing, or we haven't sat down and had a joint meeting with the City Council in the time that I've been on this board. And I think those times are important, so I personally would like to see that maybe as part, more of an overreaching city goal, to have more connectivity between our boards and commissions and council. Maybe not all at once, although in a way, with the Zoom process, we probably could. So that's something I'll throw out there.
Yeah, I don't think we've had a joint Planning Commission-City Council meeting. since kind of early on in the general plan update process.
Right.
We did do it once, well, I think maybe in relation to goals, I recall, we just did a meeting where I went to the city council, all of the department heads went to the city council with their board chairs to present the recommendations out of those boards for the goal setting process. We did that, I don't think we had a joint meeting on it actually, but again, it's been a while, your friend.
Just a thought. Any other comments? Scott, in terms of the parking management plan, you said the study's been done, so that sounds like it's kind of ready to take off. There was a question that Kathy raised, Kathy Novak, about parking in Lou fees, that whole situation. Could that somehow be incorporated with the parking management plan as we look at what the needs are, what we're using those funds for? Are those funds reasonable? You know, if you're charging $15,000 per space for somebody, you know, who's doing a restaurant on the waterfront, is that becoming, again, prohibitive for businesses to open?
No, that was not the task of the consultant. They were simply there to do a kind of a parking count analysis and duration analysis. In other words, how many spaces are open at given points in time, and how long are cars parking? And doing that in the backyard downtown in the rock, rural rock area. As far as how that relates to parking, they now, they weren't asked to do that. That's probably something we'll have to connect together, as well as some other parking management tools. So that's, it's a good question. I wouldn't be able to answer how, understand how that all works together, but it's something we'd have to consider.
Okay.
I mean, our and Lou fee certainly don't cover the cost of providing parking. Either it be a surface lot, or like a parking garage or parking structure. I mean, those are in the, you know, 50 to 60,000 dollar range per space for a structure, and more in the, you know, probably between 20 and 40 for surface lots, depending on where the surface lot would be located. An example, so.
So then it will be interesting to see what this parking study tells us in terms of, you know, do we have a great need for more parking? If that's the case, then we really do have to continue to, you know, find ways to fund that. But if it looks like there are ways to shuffle it around, to sort of meet needs, maybe using outer lots, using trolleys, using whatever, you know, it may be something to look at, a different approach to that. And you had talked also before, Scott Graham, about, you know, striking differently, diagonal parking, all those kinds of things to gain more spaces.
Yeah, we can get a pretty decent yield out of that, on, you know, rolling that out over several streets, and, you know, there's some different opportunities there to get that done, you know, that doesn't really cost the city necessarily anything, at least in the near term, so just kind of depends on where we go with that. But yeah, that's one way that we can increase the number of spaces, because the parking management plan doesn't really speak to the need for parking structures.
Another item that I was discussing with Ms. Novak, the idea of business improvement districts, and I think we'd probably be looking at the downtown, might be a hard sell with those businesses, even though I could see some, you know, exciting possibilities if we could pull it together. I think it might be a huge job. But one of the things she reminded me of was way back when we had transient vendor business license fees. Part of that money was supposed to go into a downtown improvement fund, you know, especially for the events that are, like the farmer's market and the art in the park, you know, whatever events turn up in the downtown with vendors. And I don't know whatever happened with that, you know, there were supposed to have been fees collected, and then the city would match those funds, and then you'd do a banner program, or you'd do sidewalk improvements, or I think some of the more decorative poles were purchased with those monies way back. So, and that may be something to talk with the finance director about, if those funds even exist still, or if there's a separate.
I don't believe our current fees don't break anything specifically out for those, so I don't know. We have to do some research to figure out where that went, or what's going on with that.
Yeah, I'm not familiar with that, you know, and I started the same day, our former finance director started, and then she left the organization in October of last year. So I've never heard that come up in our conversations, and we had a new person start a couple weeks ago. So I don't think we'll be able to find anything to that effect, but related to the business improvement district approach, the city partners with the chamber, we pay them on a contract basis to serve as an economic development arm of the city and certain things, and one of those, one of the goals for this upcoming year, the one we just started a few weeks ago, is to assess whether business improvement districts would be viable for downtown and the waterfront area. So that's.
If you have a partner in that, I think that's great, to get that conversation going. I'm not sure this board should take time, you know, we have a lot of other important sounding goals to address, so.
Right, well, maybe, maybe there's something, just to keep you on, in the loop on, if the public works advisory board have, Harvard advisory board would have more to say on that, but it is something council's already directed us to work on, so.
Okay.
Yeah, we're on that one. It's a good, we don't, we've always sort of been debated about it for a long time, but, you know, actually putting the numbers together to show if it could be worth it or not is an important thing, so that's our first step.
So I saw Bill and Joe with hands up. I don't recall who was first, but Bill, you're on top of Joe. Bill, why don't you go first?
Well, maybe only on your screen. So, I would like to hear a little bit more about both the community financing districts and business improvement districts, from both Scott and Scott, relative to Moro Bay. Business improvement districts make a lot of sense in some towns, but I'd love to hear from the two of you why, like the kind of the positives and the negatives. Can we take a few more minutes on that?
I'm not an expert by any stretch. I, you know, was sort of the chief staff in some respects for the tourism business improvement district, but that's purely for marketing purposes and not physical improvements. But my limited experience in Boulder and Santa Cruz, you know, with bids, where the point is to take decision-making and the money, sort of out of the city and put it into those businesses or property owners who experienced the real in those proximity. So in Santa Cruz, for instance, the downtown had a business improvement district, and they raised funds through annual fees, and they had a board that, you know, hired an executive director who sort of oversaw those funds, and they would put on things like parades, plant street trees, do street washing and power washing on sidewalks, another kind of, you know, look towards physical improvements, like lighting, for instance, decorative lighting and those kind of things. So the pros I would see is that the businesses sort of take kind of control of their space. Obviously, they still have to work with the city, because their purview is still under the city and the council ultimately, but as an offshoot, you have more of that direct interaction with the businesses.
So Scott, do you have an idea? I mean, this comes from tax increment, right?
Right.
The way, so the businesses vote on this, then there's real money available.
Right.
Do we have any idea preliminarily, what kind of dollars we're talking about?
No idea, not even a back and half, and that's really what the sitting chamber are going to be working on, is to get even an idea, a ballpark on that. And also, while doing that, gaining a sense of interest from the business owners who would be paying into that. You know, in Santa Cruz, it was a monthly or an annual fee, you know, so it all depends on sort of what people feel comfortable doing and what that vision may look like. So I really wish I could give you more information, but I don't.
And is, can you give me an idea, is the study looking at, you know, in Barkadero, Moro Bay Boulevard, Main Street? How did you break it up?
Right now, we're just looking at business improvement district stream. I think downtown and waterfront probably were the most likely focused areas.
And they would likely be separate, is that, is that what, how you're looking at them?
It could be, or it could be that it only would work in tandem, so I don't, yeah, all those kind of questions to be explored.
So right now, the study, the chamber's working on this analysis?
They're going to, like I said, we approved the contract for this fiscal year, council did on June 22nd, you know, so about a month ago, so no work is starting yet, but that's during this fiscal year.
Is there an outline of what that scope of work is?
Not yet. Not yet. More to come.
And then just quickly, I'm not sure I know what community financing districts are.
They're also focused in specific areas. The city can be the one that forms them, they kind of take the place of redevelopment agency type things, they're very similar to that. And so you could see then, you know, doing those in places like, in and around where the battery project's going to go in potentially. You're going to increase the value in the area quite a bit, that would make sense potentially to put some, you know, curb gutter sidewalk stuff in, maybe the project isn't otherwise putting in, or something along those lines, so. And we have a lot of areas in town that don't have curbs, gutters and sidewalks, and maybe some of those we would want to on our major collectors and things like that.
And where does that money come from? Is this a financing mechanism? Is that the idea?
It's based on property taxes. We get a portion, we get an increased portion of it to pay back over a certain amount of time.
Per project?
Just in the area that you established the district.
So you create a fund, and then you decide on priorities on how to use it, is that right?
Yes, that's basically how it works.
And are there, is this a common thing in other cities?
It's becoming more common after redevelopment was dissolved in 2011 or 12. You know, a lot of those have been completely wound down, so this is ways to address some blighted areas or industrial areas to capture the incremental increase in the property tax value. The nice thing about the finance district is that you can bond against those revenues. So, for instance, the numbers being tossed around for a potential battery project, this is the city would capture about $400,000 to $500,000 additional property tax per year. So you could, you could sort of collect that over, you know, project that out over 20 years, you got a pretty significant, you know, bucket of money. You could bond against that and have, you know, $10 to $20 million or whatever right out of the gate, and then you pay that off over time, but then you have $10 to $20 million to make significant improvements.
So a redevelopment agency has its own staff, its own department. Who runs a financing district?
That is a good question. Redevelopment doesn't exist, so those agencies are gone, but I don't know how a tip or whatever we call it, I don't know how we staff that, it'd probably be myself or Scott.
Yeah.
Scott gets to on that.
At least development agencies were that way too, by the way. Was always, a lot of the same staff that were just planners and folks in smaller cities, you know, that's how I got introduced to it.
No, it's interesting. I mean, this is, to me, this is a big deal. The redevelopment agencies meant a lot to a lot of cities. How do we find out more? I mean, this could be a really good tool for Moro Bay. How do we even explore this?
Well, I mean, that's, if you identify it as one of the things that you'd like us to work on and give a recommendation to city council, that could be one of the ongoing things that we look at. It's a good idea, just in light of the fact that we do have a battery project making its way through our process, so in that area, that might be a good thing to do there. I mean, we don't know yet, because we haven't really looked into it, but it does make sense. And so just for that reason alone, because the increase in value we're going to get in that location, it might make a lot of sense for us to do that.
So what if I push a little harder and say that I think we should have a better idea of what the study would do and how you even begin to investigate it? Would there be an interim step, I'm asking, to sort of understand, I mean, this is a really interesting thing to me. How do we even find out how we would look at it? I guess I'm saying, is there, can one of you give a, like a one sheet preliminary idea what it might involve?
I mean, I actually have information on it, so yes, I could give that information to the planning commission if you're interested in that, sure.
Yeah, I would be, thanks.
I wonder if it would be worth also meeting with Erica from the chamber and/or whoever else might be part of that working group to discuss it further, what they're seeing from their point of view, what they're looking at their task with it. They've got some heavy hitters that understand this stuff.
Right, and I just want to be clear that the chamber contract contemplates review of a business improvement district, but this other idea is separate from that contract, so that would be purely a city.
Separate.
Yeah, we would be looking at an internal kind of review of that. Our city attorney, his firm has experience with other clients in doing this, as well as a sort of corollary, which is a potential development agreement with Vistra for the battery project as well, and sometimes those things go hand in hand. Very, very, very complicated deals, and very complicated financing schemes.
So Scott?
Yeah, go ahead, sir, yeah.
So it's, they're two separate things, but they definitely are complementary.
Yes, sir.
And interface. So I kind of like Susan's comment, I mean, I think it's worth, I'd love to hear what the chamber's thinking about, and for me, to have the commission be a little more aware of this, these are really significant tools in other cities, and I guess I'd be excited to sort of see, do they work here?
Right, yeah, and we definitely can ask the chamber if they are interested in pursuing the, or providing their input. I just can't command that as the, as our contractor with the city, so that would be a separate.
You could ask, yeah.
Yeah, as I can always ask, yeah.
All right, Joe, have you got some comments still there, or questions?
I just wanted to add that with respect to a finance district or a community development district, you know, I'm usually thinking in terms of any revised approach to parking in Barkadero. I support the notion of there being a distinct district there, and that would be assured that parking revenues would go to that district for the benches, planning, lanes, sidewalk, and that sort of stuff, so that the business owners could actually see some benefit from the sacrifice they're making, and perhaps, you know, giving up free parking. That was it.
All right, thanks. Jen, did you have anything to add? Mike, hang on, Jen, I see Mike with his hand up, we'll get to you next.
Yeah, and I just thought I'd chime in and agree with Susan and Bill that I'd like to see the chambers, like what will its goals be and objectives, working for the city, and then coming back to the planning commission, how would we understand that? We understand what their role will be, how we can work with them, and even lead them in some of these areas that concern us as a planning commission. So, you know, until we get all that information, we won't be able to do that, so the sooner we have that, the better, but I totally agree that we should be working with them.
Thanks, Mike. Jen, did you have anything to add on this particular item?
Well, I have a few things. I want to thank our city manager, Scott, for coming here and giving us the lowdown on what's happening with city council and goals. I, with Susan, I think that all of your goals are amazing, and the communication element of it is amazing. Something just to throw out there, because we're talking about this, not to get into the nitty gritty details, but since it's such a transient city where people are moving in and out, I do hear from people a lot, more often than not, that they're not really quite sure where to get their information from, basic information about the city and whatnot. So maybe you've already done this, and I just didn't get the mail, but maybe just sending out once a year, just like to all the residents of Moro Bay, just a basic, you know, here's the website, here's the channel that you can watch all of the meetings on, you know, for city council and whatnot, but just like the basics. Just jotted down on some little simple piece of paper to the residents, just an idea. But other than that, you guys rock at communication. And then as far as the goals for planning commission, I'm looking through here and I'm going, gosh, like, they're all really important, so we'll just whittle this down. But nine and 10, I'm looking at climate action. um, but nine and 10, I'm looking at climate action, um, I'm wondering, Scott, Graham, or, well, either of you, if you can, um, elaborate on the climate plan or action plan a little bit more for me, because I'm just curious if number 10 could somehow be implemented into number nine, if that's even, you know, something that's possible, so, if you could just kind of dive into that just a little bit more for me on number nine.
So, we, we have an existing climate action plan, um, it sort of turned out or ended about a year or so ago, um, so, we can't use it for, um, our environmental, uh, evaluations on projects, um, which becomes a little bit of an issue, um, now that we're transitioning to using vehicle miles traveled, travel versus level of service for traffic impacts, um, and that vehicle miles traveled, um, component deals really with, uh, with climate change, uh, and reducing, uh, carbon footprint, and, uh, use of fossil fuels and those types of things. Um, so, it's important because it evaluates the entire, in its entirety, the city's use of fossil fuels, and, you know, and, and provides ways, and again, implementation things that the city can do, um, to reduce its carbon footprints. Um, and so, because our thing's kind of timed out now, we need to update the, then to come up with, with a new evaluation of it, um, we get some of the information about how much we're using now, um, and, and, but, uh, we don't have a plan in place that says, go do X, Y, and Z as mitigation, um, for a project that is a hotel, right? We have, we have an issue that if we build a hotel, we're bringing people into the city so we're increasing traffic that comes here, so, um, you need to have pretty good, um, measures in place to sort of offset, um, those impacts from a climate standpoint. Um, so, that's, um, I think that's why it's important, and again, because ours is out of date, it's, it's good to, to be working on updating it. We are working with the other jurisdictions in the county to do that, though, but, uh, we haven't, haven't moved off the, off the button on it yet, um, to either, as a group, apply for grant funds, or individually to apply for grant funds, and I'm interested in doing that if, if the community's interested in doing that, or if the planning commission and city council are, because there are some funds available out there, um, that we could go after if that was the desire of the, of the community.
Boy, that just ties in so much with diversifying our economy, so it's not dependent on building these sort of massive tourism structures, and the fact that, you know, people like me have started a business in town, have moved out of town, and now I'm contributing to those vehicle miles traveled to get to work every day, um, which ties it back into our housing problems, and so it's, it's a, it's a holistic problem, um, and issue.
So, Susan, it's really bad that you moved out of Moro Bay, now you-
It's terrible, I really screwed up. It's all my fault, I'm telling you, but at least I didn't open a hotel. Jen, were you finished? Did you have some more?
Yeah, no, I'm good. I, this is a very complete report here, so, no, it's great, thank you.
Scott, did you have, uh, she had a question about rolling tree into the, you know, how does that-
I mean, I suppose it could be, it's probably easier dealt with on its own, um, you know, because other communities aren't gonna have the same desire, and I think we probably will be doing a sort of global look at this from the communities in the county, um, assuming they seem to be focusing in now on, on, you know, going back to the individual boards that run the cities, city councils, board supervisors, what have you, and getting some authorization from them to work collaboratively on this officially, I mean, they meet once a month, I think, right now, or maybe quarterly, um, and, uh, they seem to be getting the next step to, to, you know, to ramp it up a little bit now, and so, um, I think that the tree thing wouldn't be of interest to most of the folks, um, in it, but it would be up to us. This regularly comes up, and it probably wasn't, isn't something that would take us a lot of work to do. Um, uh, there's a lot of these similar programs out there that we could, you know, sample a few of, and then bring them back in front of the commission and say, you know, let's, let's talk about it, and we could probably come up with one in, in just a few months, um, really, probably, you know, maybe four or five months, we could probably put something together that, that works well for the city, so.
Um, I'll just throw out real quick, and then we'll get to you, Bill, because I see your hand up. I, I personally, when, when, when you're looking at setting goals and objectives and all, I like to, there's gonna be some huge ones that take a lot of time and energy, and some easy to finish ones, so I always like to throw in some of those, you know, low-hanging fruit, quick wins, um, I think the tree bank idea would be one of those, that we could probably get through pretty quickly and say, check, you know, yes, we did that. The same with the historic preservation ordinance, I think, um, there were lawyers who looked at it, there were, you know, Caltrans people working on it, there were architects and historians working on it, so, and, and they looked at all sorts of ordinances from all over the state, so I think that might be a quick win, which, you know, could be nice, just to, okay, we'll review it, we'll make sure legal looks at it, again, get a little subcommittee together, might be a nice one to just, okay, we got another check in a column that's done. Uh, Bill?
Uh, thank you. Uh, I had a, I wanted to tie on to Jen, um, specific about the climate update. Scott, does this mean we have no specific requirements for buildings, like LEED certification, for example, um, to the city? Does the city have anything specific that we require of projects?
Well, I know we have the Green Building Code, I mean, everything has to be bad.
That's state, that's state, right?
Yeah, we don't have anything-
We, we don't go beyond that?
Right now, no.
But we, we could consider that?
We could, yes. I mean, we're also gonna be bringing forward also the, the CalGreen ordinance, which is, um, we're gonna be adopting that here, it's part of SB 1383, so, um, that'll be, that'll be another item that comes forward, um, to council, actually, um, as part of the implementation of SB 1383.
So, I mean, uh, I guess, uh, just to kind of give my kind of final thoughts after hearing the discussion, there's some really good things here, and some of them could be really significant, um, they also are challenging. I, I guess I would like a little more time, um, maybe if, you know, how other commissioners feel, I would like to research this a bit, think about it, maybe talk to a few of, of the, the community folks, um, because I do think, uh, picking priorities here could make a difference. Um, I like what Susan's saying, there is low-hanging fruit, like the preservation ordinance and the tree bank, but at the same time, how detailed we get on those things could be quite a bit of work. So, um, I, I guess if, is it, does it make sense that we, I don't know if we're expecting a vote or something today, but I guess I would like to take some time to think about this before we offer a priority, um, and would love to hear what other commissioners say.
Um, Mike's got his hand up?
Yeah, Susan, and I totally agree with Bill, and it would be nice, even if the commission could talk amongst itself and massage these to our top priorities, versus trying to come out with a vote right now. But the other thing I, so I agree with Bill on that, but the other thing I wanted to bring out is, because it's happening in real time, you know, the governor approved, you know, all this money yesterday for affordable housing, obviously, we're working on our housing element, so how will the city use legislation that's being, you know, literally passed today in helping it meet its goals and objectives? In other words, will we pursue some of that money that the governor just put out there, historical money? I'm talking about billions and billions and billions of dollars of, of money for things like how affordable housing, we just talked about that, so, who's gonna be that point person and trying to, you know, bring some of that money here and making sure we all have a shot at it? Do we have, uh, an answer for that?
Well, I mean, again, we have $160,000 in grant funding we're using right now to do housing element implementation and policy update, um, uh, so, we're working on that effort right now. Um, we have limited staff, so that's actually a big lift for us, um, you know, and, uh, while there are other funding sources out there, uh, we do meet, uh, regularly with the other jurisdictions in the county, um, on a housing kind of team, I guess, if you will, and we have been talking about this, uh, for a while, and I think, I think we got a meeting upcoming here pretty soon, um, this is one of the agenda items that are on the meeting, uh, maybe next week or something.
Yeah, and Scott, the reason I'm saying is, is because I've already gotten calls from people, I work with Sacramento all over the state that are gonna jump all over that money, I mean, they're already working on that, I mean, as soon as the governor signed the bill, they were on it, I mean, they were going after that money, so this is the time, and, uh, and I, I even think a planning commissioner could work with whoever's working on, on this, as well as a council member that may be interested, in trying to, you know, take advantage of some of the things that are happening today, and the money that's out there today, because it won't be out there long. As soon as it, you know, it's gobbled up, it's gone.
A lot of the, a lot of the money will be funded, it will be funneled through some of the local agencies, uh, that we have here, like SlowCog and things like that, so, um, they'll be, that's a lot, that's oftentimes how the money, the money's administered, um, through, though, our Department of Housing and Community Development and those types of things, so they have to kind of put the programs together to funnel the money out because they're the ones who are responsible for monitoring it.
Do we know if the county is doing that? Are they pursuing this?
They, our next meeting is, I think, about three weeks, um, and I wasn't on the last one, Nancy Hubbard, uh, a part-time planner was, um, and I don't, I haven't had a chance to speak with her about it, uh, since then, uh, and everybody's tracking it, and we're talking about other opportunities we might have, um, more globally, uh, to do bigger things, um, and, uh, I know it was slated for our next meeting to have a, a bigger conversation about it, so.
Scott, do you know when that meeting is, by the way? Uh, that next meeting you were talking about?
I don't. Good, it is on, uh, August 12th, for Regional Housing Action, um, change.
Yeah, the reason I was asking, Scott, is because I'd be willing to volunteer to, I don't know if it's open to the public, but to put myself out there as a, you know, planning commissioner, at least, to be part of that, and, you know, bring back notes to the commission, and, you know, just, I think that we ought to be involved with that since one of our charges is the housing element, you know, and making things happen, so, you know, again, I'm just throwing it out there only because that's a big item on our list, a priority, so, you know, that's just my thoughts, so, I'll let the commission decide how it wants to handle it, but I'd be willing to volunteer to participate, because I have the time, that's why I asked you about that.
Appreciate that, Mike.
Okay, no problem, thank you.
Thanks, Mike, that's outstanding. Um, any other comments, questions? Um, the commercial design guidelines, that's something we had talked about, um, and it's, I, I, it almost ties in a little bit with the waterfront master plan in terms of, we have different design areas, I think their look is different, say, than the downtown, old town look, um, and, and of course, we did have the downtown waterfront strategic plan, which set up a lot of different kinds of guidelines, um, how is this different, more or less?
So, it's a good, good question, uh, Mr. Stewart. Um, the, um, the downtown waterfront strategic plan does have some general design guidelines in it for commercial buildings, um, does have some general design guidelines in it for, uh, you know, public furniture and those types of things for the, you know, sort of the, on the streetscape type, type thing, like benches, tables, that type of thing. Um, and I think what this would do would be formalize what those things actually are, be more specific, um, those were a little bit higher level because they needed to be. Um, um, there's some, I think the, the design guidelines for them, there's some general ones that sit on top, and then there's some ones that are specific to both the downtown and the waterfronts, um, I think it would be a starting point for developing something along these lines, um, you know, that would be more specific, um, I think that's kind of where we would start, we would, you know, cobble together all of, we have design guidelines in a lot of different places, but like you said, the waterfront master plan also has design guidelines, they're a bit outdated, uh, in them, but, um, they're still general enough to, we, we apply them for all the projects that are down there, and it's, they work pretty well, um, so, um, I think it would be, you know, ramping up the game down there a little bit, though, being more, a little more prescriptive, probably, uh, and, uh, a little more, adding more detail into those, those design guidelines, I think.
Susan, you know, I'm, I'm looking at this, listen, and I, and I realize that I tend to gravitate towards those, those goals that have the more immediate and invisible consequences for the town, uh, as opposed to some of the bigger problems in which Moro Bay is, you know, a smaller participant in the overall scheme as, uh, as in climate change, or, or the wind farm, or anything like that. So, much like what you were saying, um, the commercial design guidelines, particularly for the Embarcadero, where there seems to be, you know, an ongoing interest in remodeling, it's a sort of constant process, and, you know, I think we should be, we should have some guidelines so that we can, I don't, improve, but, you know, preserve some of the better things that we have there, and, 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 somebody mentioned the, the, um, establishing some kind of district for the area, but also, again, historic preservation, although we're fortunate that we don't have probably that many buildings that would ultimately fall into the category, and, and retreat preservation, um, things that, um, will be immediately visible in our sort of smaller kind of challenges that we, we'd like to get in the short term. And then, the other thing I'll say with respect to housing, uh, you know, I, I, you know, particularly, uh, housing for the homeless, okay? And, um, you know, I, I subscribe to the notion that each community, um, really has to step up and take responsibility for the homeless population in its own community, but for, for small towns, uh, I, I don't know if that really works, and, and I think probably the only feasible way to address the homeless situation is in a kind of a, in our situation, a kind of a countywide, so I, I'd really support and encourage, you know, all of the coastal towns in San Luis Obispo get together to address that, and where can some sort of, uh, acceptable, secure housing for the homeless community be placed so that we never face, you know, probably even one hundredth of the scale of what the Los Angeles and Venice is facing? Those are my comments.
Thanks, Joe. I, I do think, um, in the housing, you know, it's not just, it's not only dealing with the unsheltered population, but something that the, um, I'm on the Government Affairs Committee that the chamber's put together, and one of the terms that was brought up was the missing middle. We don't have missing middle housing, so for, you know, working folks like myself, who are actually making pretty decent income, but the housing that's out there is, it's not out there, you know, there, we're, we're not building it, um, what is getting sold is highly inflated prices for, for what it is, and, um, I don't know how we address that as a, a community, because that's a market-based problem. Um, housing is huge, there's, there, it's a big, big issue, um-
And it's tremendously exasperated coastal towns, as, uh, said so often, they, they aren't making any more coastline when the population is growing. And I, I didn't mean to suggest that the homeless situation is the only aspect of the housing-
Right.
But, uh, I, I, I wanted, I wanted to address, I wanted to say something about that.
And I agree that we're a small town, and it does need to be a more global approach-
Yeah.
-in our, our county and the other communities, yeah. And Jen, you've got your hand up?
Yes, I do. Um, I actually want to go back to the, um, commercial design guidelines, um, on that topic, uh, that would also apply to North Moro Bay, correct? I mean, as far as the way that those commercial developments look and are, you know, are developed essentially, but I just want to get clarification, would that, that also includes that area, correct? Because it would be for all businesses?
Yeah, Commissioner Ford, we have, uh, four commercial districts in town that we've identified, um, in, uh, in various documents, um, but there are the downtown waterfront, the Quintana Corridor, and North Bay, so, so all of those are distinct, they're, I don't think any of them are really the same or really even similar.
Right.
Um, and, uh, I, I will, I will, you know, add to this, that the commercial design guideline, you know, um, concept, you know, moving forward with something along those lines, was a desire of former planning commissioner, Jerry Luer. Um, he was, uh, he thought it was important that we, we, since we've done residential design guidelines, that we, that we do something with commercial design guidelines, and he was, um, very much, um, pushing for that in the, in the general plan updates, um, that we, you know, have that as an implementation item that we carry out in the future, because we didn't have anything that really addressed the uniqueness of all of the commercial areas in town, so.
Okay, I just wanted to bring that up, only because I know it just seems like, more often than not, when we talk about commercial guidelines and whatnot, we have focused heavily on the downtown area and the Embarcadero, and I just, you know, I just wanted to say the significance of that specific line item would pertain to all the, all the areas, all the commercial- would pertain to all the areas, all the commercials. So I think that that's, that is important as far as that goes. And then my other, something else I wanted to mention is, yes, I agree, it's important to do the easier projects and get those checked off, but just to push back a little bit on things like climate action, I think that Moro Bay, we really stand out as far as what other cities in our county, they look to us. I feel as though, is that, maybe the trendsetters, I don't know if that's the right term here, but we're forward thinkers, we're progressive in our thoughts. And I think that some of these larger projects that are going to take some time are important to include because small towns can often be where it starts. And we can be that catalyst for larger cities and maybe whole counties to follow suit. So anyway, I just, I just wanted to put that out there when we're deciding on which items we want to focus on, that, you know, the smaller, easier ones are great, but we should really throw in some of the larger, broader goals that will take some more time and effort.
Again, I want to tag on to Jen here. I'm very interested in the commercial guidelines, less so for the Embarcadero. I see a huge need in those other areas. So I really follow Jen's lead on that.
I would agree with that, Bill. I think Embarcadero does a great job of tying in maritime culture with their buildings. And I think, you know, actually, the commissioners, they've reviewed things, have made those kinds of sometimes comments, but I just think the architects who are doing them are really paying attention to that, so.
And, you know, just to add, in our short time that I've been on the commission, you know, with all of you, we've had a number of projects which I think have suffered because of a lack of guidelines. I don't think we're presenting the best street frontage we should, and this is areas facing, you know, our major freeway, right? Our major 101, right? It's like, it should be better, yeah.
Mike, is that your hand up?
Yeah, and I just wanted to tag on to Jen again. I guess she's getting all the tags tonight. Good job, Jen. I just thought I'd just comment that I remember when we first started, you know, this water crisis we're in, you know, with this latest drought, that SLO was one of the best counties in the state when it came to saving water. She's right. You know, I think as a county, we do great in certain areas. That's why I thought, now to backtrack a little, when it comes to housing, that kind of further kind of justifies why we should get together, use that approach, like what you said, Susan, right? Work on that, not necessarily from Moro Bay, but as a region, like SLO. I think if we could all get together and come up with a plan to try to, you know, grab some of those funds for, we call it the missing middle in the Bay Area, it's called affordable housing. Because nobody can afford to live in the Bay Area because they're all, they're all middle-income people, but they can't live in the Bay Area. So we call that affordable housing in the Bay Area. So now we're finding that we need affordable housing in San Luis Obispo. So that's why I think that, like we did with water, I think the county does really well in general with water, we should get together and try to work on our housing elements and our housing plans together since we're so small in number compared to, say, the Bay Area as far as volume. Santa Clara County is like 10 times as big as San Luis Obispo County as far as numbers, you know, people. So all I'm saying is we should get together and work on some of those items, the bigger items. But again, housing is huge. So that's one of those things that we should work on, like what Jen's saying, we should work on that one too. That's not a low-hanging fruit, but somebody's got to commit to that, okay?
Any other comments, questions? Let's see if I have anything here. So Scott, what would you like from us today?
Well...
Are you a master?
I mean, it sounds like, you know, you wanted some additional information from us. I think, Scott, are you on there? Our presentation to council the first time is going to be on the 24th, when we're doing this, August?
Yeah, we're presenting the findings, sort of cumulative input from the board's commissions and surveys to council shooting for the afternoon of the 24th of August.
Okay, so if we, if we pick this back up at our next meeting on the 3rd and I go, they will bring back some information for the commission, then we could focus the recommendations at that meeting and then we'd have that in time to make the staff report for city council, right? Scott?
Yeah, I think if you went to the second meeting in August, it would be pushing it a bit too much.
That's what I mean. I don't want to, I don't want to, I don't want to put you in that, you know, that close of a turnaround. So, so I think that's what we'll do. I'll gather together what I can and bring it back to you and then we'll hopefully do the best that we can to make our recommendations to city council based on what we have, I think. Yeah, that's kind of where I think I'm coming out of. We're not going to ask you to do anything specifically today. I'll try to focus the list a little bit, maybe get rid of some of the ones or at least change their color on the table or something for the next conversation. There's a few of them that you didn't talk about. I'll make those ones lower priority on the list and then we can talk about the ones that you wanted additional information on. Does that sound good?
Sounds good. I'll send public comment.
Okay.
So we move on to unfinished business. And D1, the Development Review Subcommittee Update.
You know, the status of the committee itself hasn't really changed. We're not really meeting yet. We're really, at this point, until we get staff on board, we're in the process of hiring now, we've got the recruitments out. Focusing on the improvements to processes that relates to our project tracking system. I mentioned that we're going to City Works Online, that's hosted through Amazon Web Services. We have the draft version of the site up now and we're vetting it. We'll probably be continuing to do that for about the next week or so. We also have our digi-plan, which is the integration with City Works to do online plan check, electronic plan check. They're starting their work right now. We anticipate that they'll be done with that integration with the City Works Online component within the next couple of weeks and then we'll start training on staff on how to use it, which will allow us to go more to a paperless format. We're also improving the business license component of City Works. I'm working with finance a little bit on that. We had a meeting with them today to work through some of the issues they've been experiencing there and to make some fixes. Our implementation and integration folks for the City Works Online, which is, their name is Centricity, they've made several changes to the business license piece of it to improve that. So hopefully, you know, that'll, we'll have all those fixes in by next week and that'll be wrapped. And I'll be working on the reporting that we need in City Works so that I can see where all projects stand, I can run a report and it'll show me where everybody is, what departments are late on their responses to, you know, the routed plans, either in planning or in the building process. And so that's the, that'll be the next phase that we're doing. That'll also be key in actually starting the meeting with the committee because I'll have metrics in my hand, right? And then we're probably going to afford, you know, another outside ad hoc or working group to have a few meetings with them. That'd be developers, representatives for projects, architects, that type, those types of folks that go through our, that go through our process and go through this same process in other cities that can help us out with that and I'd be able to show them metrics as well. So that piece of it's going to be important and I'm hoping to pick that, start working on that next week. And then as soon as we have that, I'll probably be, once I have that in hand, I'll probably have our first, our second meeting with the subcommittee, which is Commissioners Rocha and Rafael.
Great, okay. Anybody have any questions for Scott on all that? Appreciate all the work you're doing, Scott. I heard some positive feedback, you know, already with some of the changes that are being made, so I think we're heading in the right direction.
Love that. Appreciate that. Thank you.
And then D2, the Planning Commission Public Benefit Subcommittee Update. Do we have anything on that?
Well, the committee met at their first meeting last week, so that was good. Kind of laid out, we kind of started with and we included Sean Green in that because he provided a lot of input to the process and always appreciates the amount of work that he does on behalf of the city. And he's not on the committee or commission, but he just likes Moro Bay and I appreciate all that he does. It's, he's always got, you know, input to provide to us. So the committee had some discussion on that. They're going to work independently outside, away from me, I think, and then kind of work through the list of items for public benefits in there and then come back and we'll probably, I'll probably meet with the subcommittee as they kind of formalize the list and how they want to break it down. I don't know if the subcommittee members want to add anything to that. Mike or Joe?
That seems like a very comprehensive summary, but our first meeting is productive.
Yeah, and then I'll just add with Joe that thank you, Scott, for getting us off to a good start. You know, Sean's already chimed in. We're doing our homework, so we'll be getting back to you when we're ready to formalize the list.
Yeah, I think they're going to be meeting again. I thought you were going to be meeting with Sean in a couple of weeks, I think, right? When he gets back from Greece, which is where he's at right now.
What a shame.
Yeah, and even to, you know, zoom in on our call, the polite comment, which is, again, amazing.
Wow. I did not realize. That is amazing.
Could anyone remind him that we're going to have a spot open on our... Hey, Sean.
Well, I was, in fact, I talked about that, but I said, Sean, why aren't you a planning commissioner? You know, and I, you know, it's just interesting, but he, like Scott said, he just loves Moro Bay and he just loves doing the work and he doesn't have to be on a committee or a commission to do it. So I appreciate all his hard work, just like Scott's. So thank you.
He's pretty amazing. I'm excited to see where that goes. I think there's probably a whole lot of good ideas you guys have that won't be punitive for folks doing projects, but will enhance the community, so. Exciting stuff. Scott, real quick before I forget, or maybe if we're done with this one, everybody's okay on that? Yep? We'll go on to Planning Commissioner Comments, Future Agenda Items. Just a question, I know that there is that draft historic preservation ordinance. Would that be appropriate to just distribute to the commissioners who felt like taking a glance at it ahead of time as part of the goal-setting process?
Yeah, I mean, assuming the commissioners would like to see it, I'm happy to send it out.
Would you? Okay, I see Bill nodding, Joe. I mean, it's a lot, but it's pretty comprehensive and it's interesting reading, I think. I don't, again, I don't think it's, it's an opt-in kind of program, so the commission at some point might want to make it a little more, have a little more tooth to it or not. You know, you may just decide, yes, people who want to get their properties on that historic register could do so. Anyway, I just think it might be interesting as you consider these options for goals and whether things will be difficult or easy for staff to work with. This might be one that you could look at and get a feel for ahead of time, so. All right, anybody else have any other comments or future agenda items?
Yeah, I had a question, Susan. I know Bill's brought this up, but there was a time, I guess, when I first got on the commission, there was an idea of having a tour of the battery plant or the battery project. Where is that? I mean, you know, because that's one of the items we're looking at. So is that going to happen?
Yeah, yes. So that is, that is going to happen. We are working with representatives from the district to identify some times when they're going to be in town that they can take the planning commission out there. Obviously, you can't all go at the same time because that would be a ground act violation. So we have to do two, two ones. And so they know that because they want the council to go out there as well and same issue with them. So that is the idea. They were looking, last time we talked to them was towards the end of July-ish. Now we're getting more towards the end of July, it was like it's going to be in August probably when they come back with that. And they're sort of working on their old, you know, concept for outreach to the community and continuing to work on that. So that'll be coming forward here in the next few weeks, I would think.
Thank you.
Great. Okay. Moving on to Community Development Director Comments.
I don't really have anything else. Yeah, I think that's about it. I'll be putting stuff together related to the comments tonight on the goal stuff and sending that out to you and then updating the staff report as well, so.
Great, all right. Well, good meeting, folks. We will adjourn this meeting to the next meeting, August 3rd at 6 o'clock, continuing via teleconference. Good luck to you all. Have a great night. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you so much, Susan, for all your hard work.
Thanks, Jen. Bye-bye.